Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our regularly scheduled board meeting. Let's get started. The date, location, and time of this regular meeting were emailed to the Independent Press, Bloomfield Life, the Star Ledger, the Township Clerk of the Township of Bloomfield, and posted on the Bloomfield School District website on January 7th, 2021. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Guo, may I please have a roll call?
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Berger?
Present.
Ms. Studley?
Here.
Ms. Green?
Here.
Mr. Heller?
Present.
Mr. Morse?
Here.
Ms. Salinas?
Vice President Walker.
President Fishman?
Here. Number two on your agenda is a resolution to go into executive session. Be it resolved, the Bloomfield Board of Education will adjourn into closed session to discuss items which fall in exception of our open meetings policy and permits the board to have private discussions since it deals with specific exceptions contained in NJSA 10:4-12B, specifically collective bargaining agreements and personnel employment matters affecting a specific prospective or current employee. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you all in about an hour. Welcome back, ladies and gentlemen, to our public session. We are going to open it up for public comment. Number four on your agenda, just as a reminder, there'll be a maximum of 45 minutes for public comment. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. You will need to state your name and address for the record, and as we have done for the past 18 months, we open it up for agenda and non-agenda items. Ms. Guo, we'll go to you first, and then we'll go to Mr. Atkinson. Nothing? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close the hearing of the public. For those of you that want to talk to us, there'll be a second opportunity at the end of the meeting, so stay tuned. We're going to move on to number five. The suspension of report is in your packet, and Mr. G., 5B, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Fishman. I guess I'm in the Thanksgiving spirit tonight because I want to share what I'm thankful for. And first and foremost, I'm thankful for the opportunity to work for an outstanding school district, a supportive Board of Education, dedicated employees, a commitment to excellence, working together, showing compassion and empathy, professional excellence. I'm thankful personally for a wonderful family and grandchildren. I'm thankful for my health and the health of all of those that I work with and friends and extended family. Looking forward to spending time with family over the Thanksgiving holiday. So on behalf of the Board of Education, the administration, to all of those listening tonight, to our parents and children and all the entire community, Happy Thanksgiving, be safe and enjoy. And that pretty much concludes my report.
Man, how do you expect me to follow that? Phew. That was very well said. I won't try and say it again. I just have a couple of quick announcements, a couple of congratulations to all of our fall and athletes from last year for winning the sportsmanship award. It is given by the NJSIAA. It is a very prestigious award. That means across our athletic seasons, we had no red cards, no disqualifications, things like that, and they were noted by all of their competitors to show good sportsmanship, both in wins and losses. So that's a huge accomplishment. I believe the banner is going up. Also, 5th and 6th grade junior bangles winning their Super Bowl versus Summit in 1914. Congratulations to them, and congratulations, I believe, to the Bloomfield High School robotic team just won, I don't know the name of the competition, but I'm pretty sure they just won something recently. In terms of what Mr. G. said, in terms of enjoying time with family and friends for Thanksgiving, we do ask that you are cognizant of the fact that we do have COVID still going on. We still have COVID protocols in terms of traveling. If you are unsure of those, please reach out to your school building nurse. She will help you, or they will help you with whether you can go places and not have to quarantine and things like that. With that also being said, now's the time, as people go into a new year, they might be starting new jobs, getting new phones, things like that, please make sure your Power School information is up to date. This is not only for district-wide announcements, but also, God forbid, we have an emergency and need to get in touch with you for one of your children. Good luck to our play production. I believe it is happening the 18th, 19th, and 20th here at the high school at 7:00 PM, and I cannot say it as eloquently as our superintendent, but on behalf of the Board of Education, we do wish you a happy and healthy Thanksgiving, and we can't wait to see you back. With that being said, can I have an approval, a motion for the approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, a second. Thank you, Ms. Salinas, all the way down there. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Guo, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Ms. Studley?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Morse?
Yes.
Ms. Salinas?
Yes.
President Fishman?
Yes. Sorry. We're going to now move on to number seven, Curriculum and Instruction. Mr. Berger, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Fishman. We had our BOE Curriculum Committee meeting on Thursday, November 11th at 12:00 PM, and the attendees were myself, Mr. Morse, Mr. Anderson, and we had a couple of guests, Dr. Latimore and Dr. McCula, along with our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Flares is doing a fantastic job. As the minutes say inside your packet, there was a lengthy discussion with Doctors Latimore and McCula about the update on the, our equity audit. We had some examples provided about the Hispanic Heritage Month activities. Thank you very much to our administration. Muchisima gracias. We had a policy of 2425, which is in the packet for you guys, on the emergency virtual and remote program mandates. We also had a Green Team update. We'll be voting on a list of EpiPen delegates and professional development conferences. Colleagues, may I make a motion 7A through 7E, please?
Thank you, Mr. Berger, a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, discussion. Ms. Guo can have a roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Ms. Studley?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Morse?
Yes.
Ms. Salinas?
Yes.
President Fishman?
Yes. We are on to number eight, Finance and Facility. Ms. Salinas, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Fishman. Our subcommittee met Wednesday, November 10th. Present was Ms. Studley, Mr. Walker, Ms. Fishman, Ms. Guo, Mr. Skazova. I myself was absent. Mr. Skazova provided the following facilities updates. At the Demerus Exterior Brick Repairs, the stair treads and metal handrail will be installed during the spring break, which is the last part of the project. Roof replacements at Forest Glen and Franklin, the contractor is working on punch list items. Regarding BMS and BHS security camera upgrades, BMS is almost completed, pending mounting a camera on the baseball field light pole and two additional cameras requested. BH work, BHS work progressing smoothly with an anticipated completion by the end of December. Regarding Foley Fieldhouse, the DEP application has been filed. Brookdale Boiler Project and Oak Yew Roof Replacement Project, construction will begin in June next year after school closes, and demolition work at Brookdale might begin during spring break. Ms. Guo discussed the following resolutions with the committee. Approval of submission of a three-year comprehensive maintenance plan. A required annual reporting to ensure the district isn't compliant with spending at least a minimum of 0.2% of the building replacement costs to maintain our school facilities. First read policies related to federal awarded fund accountability. Approval of preventive maintenance agreement with Industrial Cooling Corporation for all 16 rooftop units at the high school. The committee discussed the professional services proposal presented by PSA for additional scope of work to upgrade HVAC systems in the auditorium, gym, cafeteria, and science wing, which were not included in the original scope of work. The administration will confirm with the architect to ensure that the scope of work in this proposal is independent of what has been included in the previous approved proposals. Ms. Guo shared with the committee's PSA report on their analysis regarding vertical unit ventilators and horizontal unit ventilators. And Ms. Guo also provided some audit updates with the committee. We adjourned at 3:35. Ms., President Fishman, this concludes my report. I would like a motion to move 8A through 8L.
Thank you, Mrs. Salinas. Thank you, Ms.
Oh, second.
I think Ms. Salinas has the movement, and Mr. Anderson has the second. Do I have any discussion? You want to be the second second? Okay, no problem. Mr. Heller, discussion?
Thank you, President Fishman. It's good to see that we're, by way of resolution tonight, specifically addressing air conditioning in some specific areas at the middle school, and that we're making sure that the electrical infrastructure that is in place is sufficient to address that. I have had conversations with fellow board members in the past. The middle school has recently had its roof redone. It is a perfectly prime location should the district ever pursue solar. So I hope that the work that PSA looks at with regard to the electrical infrastructure as it accommodates HVAC can also look at the possibility of future solar. I also note that with the PSA work that's being done, it's good that they're available to come back to help us with additional, additional work, additional scope in the middle school. But I would be remiss if I didn't channel my inner Vice President Walker and say that it seems that we're having the, them come back and provide their professional expertise to us after the fact, not because we changed our mind, but maybe because we didn't include that in the original scope of work that we'd given them. And I think that Mr. Walker has talked to all of us on the board. With the level of investment that we have going into facilities, I'm going to say on the order of $10 million over the next year and a half, two years, that maybe it's time that we, that the administration, at the request and urging of the board, consider professional services for construction management. There are many ways that can be structured. It sometimes is a percentage of the overall cost of a project, or it becomes just an add-on to an existing contract. But I think that what we're doing is really quite cutting edge and potentially beyond the expertise that we have in-house. We're, and so it may, it may be something worthy of pursuit, particularly as we develop the upcoming school year budget.
Thank you, Mr. Heller. Anyone else? Ms. Guo, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Ms. Studley?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Morse?
Yes.
Ms. Salinas?
Yes.
President Fishman?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Salinas, for the laughter. I appreciate it.
President Fishman, they are aware of the Facebook feed?
It's back.
Okay. They were working on it as we speak.
Thank you. It is back. We are live. People can talk to us soon. We are going to, on number nine on your agenda, the Personnel and Management. Mr. Heller, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Fishman. Personnel and Management Committee has many resolutions on deck tonight, resignations and retirements. We are sorry to see people depart the district, whether it's for other opportunities or just because they have reached that point in life where they are fortunate enough to retire, and we thank them for their service. We have other agenda items, including rescinding some appointments, some terminations, some new appointments, leave of absences, change of leave of absences, transfers, adjustments, extra compensation, extra compensation that's federally funding, degree change recognition. It's always great when we see additional professional degree attainment by our, our very talented staff. Approval of substitutes, approval of student/teacher field experiences, home instruction, so we have new people who are able to provide that in district. And the committee, like I said, met last week on November 11th. We were all in attendance. I as chair, Board Member Green, Board Member Fishman, and Mr. DeToli. On behalf of the administration, we reviewed the personnel notes. You'll notice that in the personnel notes tonight, we have a lot of extra compensation where staff members are really doing a great job and stepping up when we have the need for additional coverage, particularly and most notably at BMS, but really across the district. We talked about exceeding compliance, as we've continued to do during our committee meetings. We reviewed policies that are on first read tonight, 1648, which is our COVID protocol appendices, and Policy 5751. We talked about the Uniform Memorandum of Agreement with Law Enforcement that we do every year, and the committee had a lively discussion in regard to some correspondence that we've received from the community. And with that, I would like to move 9A through 9Q.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Thank you, Mr. Heller. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Ms. Studley?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Morse?
Yes.
Ms. Salinas?
Yes.
President Fishman?
Yes. We are on to number 10, Policies and Regulations. First read policies. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Berger, a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Ms. Studley?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Sleeping, but yes.
Thank you. Mr. Morse?
Yes.
Ms. Salinas?
Yes.
President Fishman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now is the time for, we open our inbox again for the public, second hearing of the public. Reminder, there'll be a maximum of 45 minutes for public comment. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. You must state your name and address for the record, and once again, as we have done in the beginning, we will open it up to agenda and non-agenda items. First, we'll go to Ms. Guo. Mr. Atkinson. Nobody wants to talk to us tonight. Okay. Seeing none, I will close the hearing of the public and move on to number 12, Business. First with Delegate and Ad-Hoc Committee Reports. Ms. Salinas?
Thank you, President Fishman. I just wanted to say that last Wednesday, we had our Essex County School Boards Association meeting at Glen Ridge Country Club, and in attendance was myself, Mr. Berger, Mr. Morse, Mr. Heller, President Fishman, and virtually Ms. Green had joined us. I just want to say that, wow, this was a very great lineup of speakers that we had at this county meeting. I just wanted to say that it was very inspirational. We had Lieutenant, our New Jersey Lieutenant Governor Sheila Oliver in attendance with us. We also had Acting Commissioner Dr. Angelica Allen McMillan, and we also had our student Rhett Moore Baker, who was actually at the, at the virtual workshop, who was a student speaker, and I just wanted to say that learning from each of them and hearing their backgrounds and where they came from was very inspiring. If I could maybe reach out to my colleagues if they have anything that they wanted to share at last, at last week's county meeting, I would really appreciate it. Thank you, President Fishman.
Mr. Heller, you want to tack something on?
I do. We also had an address by the Teacher of the Year, which was really quite interesting. She talked about being a child who was a DACA recipient and how, well, there wasn't DACA back then, but if she had been a child these days, she would have been a DACA recipient, and how her parents, you know, immigrants, very, very poor, sent her and her siblings to private instruction, worked many, many jobs, and, you know, many, many years later, she overcame her, or she learned coping mechanisms to deal with her dyslexia, and she was an incredibly thoughtful speaker. It was, it was a great evening. I think my fellow board members who were in attendance would agree. I would also like to tack on that I attended the Morris County School Boards Association meeting, where we were talking about reopening and virtual meetings, and Vice President Walker was one of the invited presenters there, and he was absolutely fantastic, did a really good job of representing what we've been doing in district with regard to virtual meetings, how we are able to bring the public in, engage the public in, by showing the video in multiple formats, and it was a good representation of the Bloomfield School District in Western, Western Essex County that evening.
Thank you, Mr. Heller. Also, just want to congratulate my colleagues. As we were sitting there at that county meeting, multiple times from multiple people, both at NJSBA and other surrounding neighborhoods congratulated us for having basically almost a, do we have a quorum? We did, if we had virtually six. Yeah, so they were impressed with the seriousness in which we take our training. So I'd like to thank my colleagues for continually coming out on your own time, making sure that we are doing our due diligence to stay up to date with our training. It was impressive. We took up an entire table ourselves, so thank you for coming out for that. Appreciate it. Moving on to 12.
I'm sorry, President Fishman, I forgot to mention one more thing. I apologize.
Yeah.
Our next county meeting will be January 12th. That will be virtual. And also to remind my colleagues that this Saturday is our Delegate Assembly. Mr. Morse is our delegate, and he'll, and he'll be representing our board this Saturday. And also on December 7th, not anyone sitting here, but there is a new board member training on December 7th called Role Responsibility. That concludes my report. Thank you, President Fishman, and again, I apologize.
No worries. Thank you, Ms. Salinas, and we're going to go over to Mr. Heller for Recycling Committee.
Thank you, President Fishman. I think December 7th, if I remember correctly, they've actually pitched it as applicable not only to new board members, but to not-so-new-board members, the three Rs training, and it's virtual. The Recycling Committee met also last Wednesday, and hopefully no one will out me to New Jersey School Boards, as there were about six or seven minutes that I was not present in the room, and you have to be present the entire time to get the full credit. Hopefully, they think I was there. I attended the Recycling Committee meeting because we have brought concerns to the township on multiple times. Mr. Manning has noted how our current recycling and garbage provider is at times not making the pickups at our district schools. That in turn leads to a rodent problem. The Board of Health has met with the district to try to figure out what to do should there be rodents at the schools, and we already have a contract for pest control, and we have traps, bait traps that rodents run through, but it doesn't really matter if you have a big pile of trash. So we've brought that to the township's attention again, particularly when the pickups are missed and when the company is non-responsive to inquiries from the district to get things picked up. And so far, I don't believe it's been resolved, but it is such a concern from the district that we've actually asked that the township, as they engage with Mr. DeFeo as their RFP author, that they include even possibly penalties that would be for whoever the next recycling and trash collection company is, should they not make the pickups. Mr. DeFeo acknowledged the correspondence and the suggestions that we had, and hopefully, since the township will be engaging in the new contract coming up, the RFPs that go out will have respondents who talk about how they actually deal with larger organizations such as ours, and timely pickups, and the way to communicate with them when pickups are missed. And hopefully, I got that correctly, Ms. Guo?
Yeah?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Heller. Thank you for doing double duty that night. We won't tell the NJSBA people, even though you just blew up your own spot. No, he did a great job actually having one meeting in one ear and listening in the other, so thank you for that. Any other ad hoc committees before I go to new business, old business, information items? Mr. Anderson?
I, it was just, I had a question for Ben at the delegate meeting, what resolutions there were, so I just asked him personally.
I don't think they had any posted at the moment.
Okay, because sometimes there's controversial things, and I just, great.
Sitting on the Resolution Committee for the state, I don't recall that we actually had anything to discuss recently. Ms. Salinas, you have something else?
No, I don't, no.
Oh, your mic's on, that's all. That's why I was, you know, seeing if you wanted to say anything. So I'm going to go on to new business, old business, and information items.
So I just want to mention.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh my gosh, did I take your spot?
No, you're good. Go.
Okay. Just want to mention, in line with President Fishman mentioning the board taking training very seriously, I'm taking part in Governance 2 mandatory training tomorrow night, FYI.
That's nice. Governance 2 is fun.
That one's really fun. Student achievement.
It is. You have something?
Yes. Thank you again.
Can I interrupt you real quick?
Of course.
I want to congratulate you.
What did I do? It's not my fault.
You got reelected?
Oh, thank you.
And I think Mr. Berger over there got reelected. Sorry to interrupt you, but I just wanted to congratulate the both of you, along with our newest member, Ms. Tabarez. We look forward to working with her in the near future and getting her started in all this wonderful training that we are speaking about, but I did want to congratulate you guys that you're now stuck with us for another three years. You should be happy about that. Go ahead, Mr. Heller.
I hope that Jay doesn't have to do any camera adjustments, because my face is probably as red as Ms. Studley's dress. I have shared with all of you, but I think we'd be remiss if we didn't share it with our community. Last Friday, Governor Murphy made an announcement in our Bloomfield Public Library that funding has been secured for the Essex Hudson-Greenway purchase. That's approximately $65 million. It needed to happen before December 31st of this year, or the rail company was going to parcel out the land, and it would never, ever have been available to create a nine-mile linear park. It will actually be the first state park in, I can't remember if it's 20 or 40 years. It's really great news. Now, that's only for the land acquisition, and there will be a lot of help that is needed from the community to convince the various funding sources to provide the funds for the actual construction of the park, but Bloomfield Board of Ed did have its own small part in it. We were probably the first school district to adopt a resolution of support. We were certainly first in our of support. We were certainly first in our community in adopting a resolution of support. The other thing I'd like to share with all of you is that I attended a workshop at Montclair State this, this past Friday, done by the MSU Human Rights and Genocide Campaign. I probably have the name not correct, but it was on contemporary antisemitism. There was a presenter from an organization called Echoes and Reflections, who ran through a bunch of teacher preparation materials, how they could be used in the class with our students. It was absolutely fantastic. I shared it with my fellow board members on the committee, the curriculum committee, but I know that we have other educators who are part of our board, and I'd be happy to share the agenda, which has all the embedded links with anybody who's interested. I probably should send it to Joe and, and Sal, Jill and Nidisha, Casey, if you want it, and anybody else who's interested.
Can you just do a group message and send it out to everybody?
I will.
Thank you.
Do not reply all.
Yeah, please do not reply all. Mr. Berger, did you have something you wanted to say? New business?
Yes. I'm sorry. All, eight of the nine board members are here tonight and are gonna be here for the next year, and I would hope that you colleagues would consider a board retreat, something we haven't done in a minute, a tentative date. I would like to suggest would be the Saturday before the Super Bowl, it's like the first weekend in February. And during this, we shall hopefully get Nick to provide us with an hour's worth of training, and then we can have New Jersey School Boards come in with an additional training, and we can have a nosh that is not wraps or sandwiches. And it, we can gain two points towards our Carol Larson certification, just cementing our dedication to training by not only training on our own or on the county level, but also as a group in front of our community. Thank you, President Fishman.
Which brings me to a point that I apologize to my board members. It's downstairs in my car. At the county meeting, we received our plaque for becoming a certified board as a whole. So congratulations to my colleagues. I will bring, when we go outside, I'll give it to you guys, so you can put it up in our room. We can definitely look into doing that, and what you're, what he's talking about is the next level of certification for the board as a whole. Like, we each do our individual training. We have certified board leaders, master lead, master board leader, master board members, new members certification, things like that. But the certification as a whole, we are now certified, and we're working toward a master board certification as a whole, which, if you look around the state of New Jersey, and Mr. Berger can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there are five, five. So this is something that we have been striving for, for a very long time, and it's something that we hope to accomplish by May. So, we can. Any other information, new information? Mrs. Salinas?
Thank you, President Fishman. I just wanted to say that I attended the high school's HSA last night, and I just wanted to stress about the fundraising for the classes. Our students are in dire need of fundraising, so I just wanted to ask the help of the community that in any which way they can to help support these classes, especially for the graduating class of this year. Thank you, President Fishman.
Thank you, Mrs. Salinas. Anything else for the good of the order before I go to everybody's favorite part of the meeting? It's called adjournment. I have a motion, please.
Second.
Thank you, second. Did I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great night. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
We'll see you again soon.